Okay.
Is that how you want to do it? That's how it is in the order, but it's up to us.
Oh.
Thank you for spelling it for that.
Then we do the audit, and then we do the budget, the budget vandalism, and then we do.
I'd yeah.
But two different.
I like rounds.
Public comments around that.
Versus.
Ready? Oh, because justice.
It's serious trouble, so I can only imagine.
Oh, because you don't. You practice. I love it. All right. Ready? Like to call the meeting to order? Mr. Colavita, will you take the role, please?
Ms. Driver.
Here.
Ms. Genovese.
Here.
Mr. Herbert.
Here.
Ms. Lindthorst.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Mr. Resnick.
Here.
Mr. Sewicki.
Here.
Thank you very much. Will you please join me for the flag salute? Let's the weekends to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, made visible with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, and the Trentonian on January 5, 2022. The meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Files. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being videotaped for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on Comcast Channel 19, Verizon Files Channel 32, and the school district website, Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in at the podium prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record keeping. I would like to request a motion to approve the minutes from the following meetings, the regular and closed meetings of February 14, 2022.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries. And we will turn over to Mr. Neal, our student representative. Good evening.
Good evening. As I've been mentioning in past couple of meetings, the main focus or priority for the student council has been focusing on our spring dance that we're still looking to potentially have in, uh, potentially the next couple of months. And for a date, we're looking to either have that at the end of April or in between the junior and senior proms. And as I've been mentioning, that that would be in place of the homecoming dance that we missed in the beginning of the year. And the whole objective of that is to raise funds for student council next year. And you know, as we've been operating, um, we haven't been really been able to do much with COVID restrictions in place, but we're hoping next year, next year's going to look a lot more normal, so we're planning to raise money for that. But, um, like a lot of our plans, it's still in a place of limbo because even though the mask mandate's gone, it seems like agendas are constantly changing within either the local or state levels. So, um, the, the spring dance is still somewhat on hold, but we're looking to push that ahead if we can because our finances are pretty easy as we only really need to hire a DJ. But it's very different from, for example, this, uh, senior and junior proms because those would be happening off school. But if we were to have a homecoming dance, it would be happening within our own grounds, which means that we have to have all the restrictions and limitations and all the same rules, uh, on school grounds. And also, it's also a certain responsibility we want to have to make sure that we prevent any potential outbreak if, if it were to happen on school grounds. And that's something that we take importance of. Um, for things coming up within soon, uh, around the student council is our spring pep rally, which would be happening this week. And as we all know, spring break's coming. But, um, if you were to, uh, if you were questioning whether the student council is looking to have activities or events outside or indoors, we're still, um, very flexible in having them indoors, um, for certain tech reasons and also just certain activities. But, um, with the mask mandates coming up, we're still looking to potentially expand a little bit more to give more flexibility to the students to potentially have more fun. But we're still stressing the importance of, uh, limiting a potential outbreak because we still take COVID importantly for the student council. And for more like student-based initiatives, if you've been around the high school, you've probably noticed that we're, uh, established an act called Random Mass Kindness. And this is working with different, uh, clubs within our school and that different faculty and students can promote their different clubs, like the statistic, like, uh, the site club, for example, that are hosting, uh, two weeks, um, where certain faculty will nominate students and then they will have, they will receive prizes relative to the club. And it just spreads information about the clubs, gets, uh, students to, uh, promote, uh, good behavior and also spreads information and gets more kids to join these, uh, activities and clubs. And, um, as of going, what I previously mentioned about the mask mandate going off school, um, we're still unsure about how like far we could stretch the, um, what we can do in student council because we're still stressing the importance of, uh, keeping everybody safe with our activities. But we're still trying to hopefully go back to somewhere of a place of normality, especially how we looked in two years ago. But it's, it's important for us to find a balance where we are trying to keep everybody safe, but also bring back a lot of activities that a lot of people enjoyed that the student council can run. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Neal from the board? Well, I'll just say I applaud your efforts to strike that balance. It's not an easy one to do and, and we appreciate that, that you're keeping that in mind as you guys move forward with your planning. And of course, we all hope that you get back to that place of normalcy where we're all hoping to get there as we move along. Thank you so much for being here with us. I do not have a presentation, a, a, a report this evening. I'll, uh, you know, uh, make any comments as needed during the meeting, but I will pass off to Dr. Trese. I know she has a brief report for us this evening.
Yes, thank you, President Lindthorson. I'm also going to keep my, um, my comments brief. We do have a budget presentation and we also have our eco warriors here today that's, that are all geared up to present. But I did wanted to, to share our brief update. I have exactly one slide. Um, I'll give you the COVID update without a slide. Um, we met with our health department on Friday. We are in the green and so things are going well. I don't even want to put a slide up because we're in the green and we're going well. I want it to stay that way. Um, but again, if, if you, um, your child or a staff member are feeling symptoms for COVID, stay home, call your school nurse. I don't care if you're vaccinated or not, you need to stay home. And, um, they will work through, uh, the quarantine process and returning to school, um, when symptoms subside or you have an alternative diagnosis and all of those things. So please continue to communicate with our school nurses. Um, they are still tracking those with the health department and the state. Um, but right now as a county, we are doing well, so we're just going to hold it down and, and hopefully things will continue to improve. So then here is my second slide for my presentation, my, my, my slide. And you are the first to officially hear this. Um, the board has agreed and we've been talking and planning to use our second e-learning day as a wellness day for the community. We all have, uh, been working very hard for two years. It's been stressful, been a lot going on. Our teachers, our students, and our families have really been under a lot of pressure. And you haven't seen your families. Some folks have been staying away from family members and not visiting. So we looked at our calendar and we decided if we, uh, could preserve our, our second e-learning day without a weather event, and so we need no weather events between now and April 18th. We are going to give that day back to the community and we are asking that you just get outside and enjoy your families and take pictures in nature and show us, us that you're using our, our free and open spaces either here in New Jersey or wherever you're visiting your, your family. Um, so that day is now yours and, um, we, the, no homework. I'm going to tell your teachers, no quizzes, no tests the next day and nothing due. So just enjoy your families the Monday after the, the long Easter weekend. So that is my only slide that I have for my update. I know that everybody's texting and telling everyone, please do spread the word. I'm going to email the whole community and I'll let folks know so that folks can plan for that long weekend.
Any questions for Dr. Trese? Probably not.
Can I just chime in real quick? That is the Monday of our, uh, Earth Week, or, um, so we plan our Green Week. We have a, have a whole number of activities that you're going to hear a little bit later today, uh, or this evening. But we, we plan on sharing that with the community at large, so they can follow up.
Yes, and please share your selfies of being out in nature. Who knows, you might show up on our websites during that Earth Week. That's what we're hoping.
All right. Thank you very much for, for spreading the joy. We appreciate it. We like that. So we will move on to our climate action proposal. Am I inviting Principal Riley? Are you kicking it off? No, no? Okay. I just wondered. So please, uh, we're, we're happy to have you here with us tonight. Come on up and join us.
Hi. Um, oh my God, I'm Mike. Okay, hi, thank you for having us. Thank you to the board and to the school administration. So my name is Annika Alt and I'm a senior at the high school and I'm also a leadership member of the Youth Environmental Society. And we are here to share our research and proposal for the school's implementation of a climate action plan.
Oh, I do?
Okay. So two months ago, we as a club decided to participate in the New Jersey Student Climate Challenge, which is a statewide project asking students for ways to improve sustainability in their school district. And we decided that for this challenge, we would try and, and ask for the implementation of and make recommendations for the implementation of a climate action plan for the school. So we, the leadership of the Youth Environmental Society, have been researching and writing up a proposal for this. And we've also been doing outreach and discussions with the Greater Youth Environmental Society. And we've been working with our advisors, Scott Fratell and Caroline McGrath, as well as local and state experts and other staff members to try and work on this proposal.
Hi, my name is Angeline McGrath. Um, I'm a senior at Hopewell. So in the HVRSD Environmental Stewardship Statement, the district commits to using resources responsibly and mobilizing the community by providing them with the knowledge and skills to create an environmentally just and sustainable future. Um, in order for the district to follow through in this vision, we propose that the HVRSD Board of Education develop and implement the climate action plan. So why is the climate action plan necessary? Um, the effects of climate change, um, have reached new highs, which we have witnessed globally through extreme, um, natural disasters and record temperatures. All the following images that you'll see are from the summer of 2021 alone. Um, due to deforestation, carbon emissions, and other human activities, um, climate change is worsening and we're seeing this impact human lives more dramatically than ever before. So first of all, the natural disasters caused by climate change are economically damaging for countries. Um, they've also created weather patterns that our communities just haven't been structured to properly handle. The photo on the right is taken, um, on Pennington Harberton Road and, um, the haze in the sky is actually due to the California fires on the other side of the country. Um, not only have there been physical consequences, but people's mental well-being have also been negatively impacted. Uh, 84% of young adults, um, have reported feeling eco-anxiety, which are feelings of worry and distress in regards to the future and, um, with the worsening climate change. There's also been an increase in student and community protests to governmental inaction on climate change. And, um, this not only demonstrates that young adults truly care about this issue, but it also underscores that they feel as though their world leaders have failed to appropriately respond to the crisis.
So this is a quote that we collected from a member of the YES Club. We were, had been discussing with the club and asking them to submit kind of their feelings about the climate crisis. And we thought this quote by a student really illustrated the ways in which young people just feel like hopeless about the climate because it really is difficult for them, for young people. We are kind of in a position where it feels like everyone is telling us how terrible things are, but no one can really do anything to stop it. And part of the reason that people feel so hopeless is because this is a huge global issue, but we're also starting to really feel the physical ramifications of it within our local communities. So Hurricane Ida last summer was one of the deadliest storms to hit New Jersey recently. And here are some photographs just showcasing destruction. All of these are from surrounding communities. They're from Lawrenceville and Lambertville. And it just, as you can see, like our infrastructure is damaged and this is not going to be the last storm of its kind because climate change does make natural disasters just worsen. So here's a picture of Washington Crossing. So we got tornado warnings last summer. I, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I cannot recall ever getting tornado warnings for this area before last summer. And then last summer, we got four of them. And so I remember like sitting in my room and then getting like a warning on my phone, like an alert saying that there was a tornado and we had to get in our basement. So my whole family went to our basement and then our phones blew up again. They told us that there was a flood warning and we had to get to like the higher parts of our house. I just kind of had to sit there and be like, okay, like we, we can't do anything. It just, it really does feel hopeless, like we're backed into a corner. So here are some more pictures of the community and the impacts of the recent storms. That picture on the side is a picture of Uncle Ed's, which is just down the road. And, okay. And this is the Black Box Theater in the high school. And so this, the Black Box Theater was a really big investment, a big project. And then it got flooded basically the year after it was opened. And that was an even more costly repair that we had to make to it. And climate change and worsening environmental factors and worsening weather patterns are just going to make necessary more and more like money expenses, like expenses like this one. And these issues are impacting the community and the infrastructure, but they're also impacting students as individuals. So these are pictures that we sourced from different YES Club members of their houses and the damage inflicted to their houses because of Hurricane Ida. And so these students live all over the township. There are pictures from Hopewell Borough and Pennington Borough and everywhere in between. And as you can see, students as individuals are being impacted by this crisis beyond just its global or political like implications. So one reason for perceived like hopelessness about the environment is the fact that, as I've mentioned earlier, a lot of young people feel like there is nothing that they can do to stop it and that those who do have power also aren't doing the things that they can. And I say young people feel this, but adults probably do feel this as well. Like no one here is in Congress. No one here feels like we have that much power in this situation. But as a school district, we actually are in a pretty unique position to try and mitigate the damage done by climate change and even try and create a better world.
Hi, I'm Daphne Newton and I am also a senior at Hopewell. So schools have a pivotal role in addressing climate change. Uh, they cannot only help educate the community, making the community as a whole more sustainable, but the district itself can help combat climate change through sustainable efforts. According to Schools for Climate Action, while climate change impacts all people and disproportionately impacts all young people and future generations, it disproportionately affects people of color and people in poverty, thereby exasperating existing inequalities and limiting equality of opportunity, which is a foundational aspiration for model, modern America. Recently, you have passed a strategic plan for equity in education with the goal to continue to advance its growth in providing all students with opportunities to, uh, to reach their full academic potential. Approving a climate action plan will help to support the equity plan by creating a community space within the schools and helping to combat climate change and climate inequality. The United States Overshoot Day, which is the day in which our demand for ecological resources, uh, in the year exceed what the earth can produce in the year, was on March 14th. Uh, this means that our country has already used up the resources that our earth can regenerate this year. Uh, the world is overusing our resources and we need to limit that as much as possible. The K-12 Climate Action Plan from Aspen Institute says, "If all schools in the U.S. shift to clean energy, sustainable food use, clean transportation, and green sustainable schoolyards over the next decade, we will have successfully reduced reliance on fossil fuels for one of the largest public sectors impacting the environment." We recognize that some sustainable solutions can have a big upfront cost, but these changes will save money over the long term, essentially paying for themselves. There are also many financing options to help offset initial financial bound, hurdle, ooh, boundaries. As we switch to a greener economy, uh, making more sustainable actions will be a good investment for the district. And over time, the district will see the benefits of being more sustainable, not only in terms of money, but in terms of health, mental and physical health, and in academic success. Hopewell Valley is already using geothermal heating in Timberlane and Stony Brook, using, utilizing solar panels on top of Central High School, Timberlane Middle School, and Bear Tavern Elementary School, implementing heat recovery units and LEDs to reduce energy usage, using green certified cleaning products, educating students and the community through Green Week, promoting green efforts within STEM classes and composting and recycling. And these are great starts, strides towards a greener school, but with the rapid pace of climate change, we need to start taking bigger steps. We thank you for what you have already done.
Hi, I'm Nadia Chazlo. I'm also a senior at CHS. So in order to actually take action on this issue, um, we believe that the district should create an ambitious climate action plan. So HVRSD can be a local and even a global leader when it comes to climate action. So this plan would not only be a shift in the school's policy, but a shift in mindset so that environmental considerations are a part of all decisions. So we are asking that the district adopts a resolution by June 2022 committing to the process of developing and implementing a climate action plan. So this plan would be developed over the 2022 to 2023 school year by a committee of people from various areas such as board members, administrators, teachers, parents, students, and local experts. But they do not need to start from scratch because, um, as you have received from the Youth Environmental Society, we have created a climate action proposal detailing our hopes and our recommendations that we have created through a lot of research about potential solutions that the board could adopt as part of this plan. So we hope that the plan drafted by this committee would be adopted by the board by June 2023 so it can begin to be implemented. By creating a climate action plan, HVRSD can further its commitment to sustainability and continue to set an example for other districts. So there's a few elements that contribute to a successful climate action plan. This includes ambitious goals to meet the urgency of the climate crisis, as well as audits, which let us know where we're starting, and then specific measurable steps that let us figure out how far we've come and even celebrate milestones along the way. So there's many resources for free or low-cost audits and they're an essential part of a successful climate action plan. And of course, since climate change affects all of us, we need community input as the district has done successfully with other efforts. So this slide outlines the goals that the Youth Environmental Society has proposed for the climate action plan. In 2018, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change published a report stating that limiting global warming to one and a half degrees Celsius would require rapid, far-reaching, and unprecedented changes in all aspects of society and that we only have until 2030 to avert the worst outcomes of increased warming. The 2022 contribution to this report added that any further delay in concerted anticipatory global action on adaptation and mitigation will miss a brief and rapidly closing window of opportunity to secure a livable and sustainable future for all. Remember that 2030 is only eight years away. The students who will be our age in 2030 are already here in the district. The urgency of this issue can be overwhelming, but we as the YES Club are confident that we have the power to make a change for the better. We recognize that these proposed goals are ambitious, but we do believe that they are achievable if we focus our efforts together. The following two presenters will discuss these goals in more detail.
Oh wait, is it this arrow? Oh, sorry.
So, hi, my name is Akansha Arvind and I'm also a senior at Hopewell Valley Central High School. So our recommended actions fall under five categories. The first category is education. We appreciate the district's commitment to educating students about environmental issues through Green Week and science classes. Our educational recommendations further these efforts aiming to implement rigorous, comprehensive climate change education in all subject areas, including but not limited to those outlined in the New Jersey Climate Change Education Standards. As the next generation to inherit this planet, schools have the responsibility to prepare us, to hold jobs, in and adapt to a world impacted by climate change. We can help ensure a livable future by teaching students to advocate for actions that combat climate change. Also, since schools serve the community by educating youth, it is important that they provide accurate and relevant information regarding the environment. The next section of recommendations deal with the district's facilities and energy use. One of our most pressing goals for the district is to achieve carbon neutrality and transition to renewable energy by 2030. Other than working towards making all district buildings energy and water efficient, it is also imperative to prepare buildings for resilience in case of natural disasters and increase the ecological value of outdoor spaces. While the district is already participating in multiple renewable energy initiatives, fully transitioning to green energy sources will significantly lower costs while better preparing the district for a greener future. The third category of recommendations focuses on transportation. These recommendations aspire to reduce carbon emissions and pollution by eliminating idling and fully transitioning to electric vehicles by 2030. According to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the transportation sector generates the largest share of greenhouse gas emissions in the country. Because school buses are the largest mass transit fleet in the United States, it's vital that schools take action by transitioning to electric vehicles. We recognize that this will be challenging to accomplish, but taking advantage of funding sources such as grants and federal and state loans can help cover upfront costs. Also, since many students and staff drive to school and park on campus, we believe eliminating idling can significantly reduce emissions.
Hi, my name is Abigail Rice. I'm another senior at the high school, and I'll be closing out our presentation. So the next category of our recommendations focuses on food and waste. So we recommend working towards a zero-waste policy throughout the school district. A starting point could be conducting waste audits in our school cafeterias, followed by taking action to eliminate food and plastic waste in particular. We commend the district's existing efforts in this category, such as committing to composting and recycling. In the United States alone, food waste produces over 113 million metric tons of carbon dioxide annually and costs $198 billion. Schools provide several meals to students throughout the day, so all waste must be handled responsibly and intelligently. Our final category is resilience. So there are two aspects to resilience. The first is to support student mental health as it relates to climate change and climate issues. And the second is to prepare schools to be centers of safety and stability in the face of climate change. So the Hopewell Valley Regional School District is a vital aspect of the outstanding community in that it provides meals, shelter, healthcare, and transportation to students, and has the power to lend the support to the entire community in times of emergency. The district has already proven to be capable of lending support during hardship, such as distributing vaccines and working with the HV Mobile Food Pantry during the COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, climate change has proven to have negative impacts on student mental health. So it is crucial for schools to provide support for students and anyone in the community experiencing stress, trauma, and/or grief due to climate change. So these images are from Green Week last year, which is another great example of how the district has already rallied together to address environmental issues. We believe that creating a more comprehensive climate action plan will build off of the goals already outlined in the HBRSC Environmental Stewardship Statement and allow the district to stand out as a leader in climate action. In closing, we acknowledge the environmental efforts Hopewell Valley has already undertaken, especially because we have seen the impacts of climate change in our local community. We hope to continue this dialogue with the board and adopt a collaborative approach to providing an environmentally just and sustainable future for all. Thank you all so much for listening.
So I'd first like to start by thanking you all for being here and to specifically thank Anika and Angelina, Daphne, Nadia, Akasha, and Abigail for that presentation. Obviously, very comprehensive, very well thought out. You've done a lot of work on this, and we really appreciate that. And also to recognize the efforts of the entire Yes Club. I will open it up to the board for questions, but first and foremost, I just wanted to ask a couple. With regard to the audit, how is that typically undertaken? Who undertakes that audit for you? I think you mentioned it was a free or low-cost option. So I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so there's a few different ways to do it, and there's also a few different types of audits. So there's something called the Local Government Energy Audit Program, which is a program where the local government, or where they work with the local government, which includes public schools, to for free provide an energy audit. And then the data collected in an energy audit can be part of a greenhouse gas assessment, which there's different calculators and templates that even students could work together with teachers to complete. And then, for example, there's also food waste and waste audits in general that can occur in cafeterias and schools that could also be completed by students and volunteers.
Thank you. I was also curious about the climate action plan itself and whether or not you're familiar with other districts that may have adopted a similar plan.
Yeah, there are other districts, not that we're familiar with in this area, but there's some districts, for example, in California, that have already adopted such a plan. And we definitely use those as inspiration for our recommendations.
As you noted, our district is often a leader at the local level and even at the national level. And I think that this is something that we should have more dialogue about and consider. So thank you. Any other board members with questions for the group?
Sure.
Yes, please, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. And I also want to thank you very much for putting this together. It makes me feel really good that there's at least a group of people at the high school level. And I'm pretty sure it's quite a bit bigger than just you guys here that care about this. I was listening to the presentation and when you kind of got to the recommendations, I perked up. So I guess my first question is you listed five categories of the recommendations. I haven't seen the report yet. Are there specifics in there? Or is that something that you plan to develop as you go on?
Yeah, so we've included specifics. Each section has a table that we've created of actions and details. So we've tried to explain how it can work, maybe how it's worked for other districts and certain steps. And the intention is for those actions to, one, show the district what students think, because we've collected a lot of opinions from Yes Club members, who are all students, and also just show what's possible and be really a starting point for the committee that we hope will be formed to develop this. So we haven't had the full information or ability to obviously create a plan for the district. That's not something we can do, but we've tried to create a starting point.
So I'm gonna, if you don't mind, just ask a couple of questions floated up, and for the rest, I'll go to the recommendations. When you talked about education and the importance of climate education, I completely agree. It is incredibly important. I know my kids are going through schools, have gone through schools, so I know that there's a bit of that that is going on at Hopewell Valley, probably a bit more anecdotally in talking to people I know in other districts and in other districts. But when you think about your educational experience and having gone through this exercise now, were there specific things that jumped out at you that were missing in your educational experience? And if they were, did they make it into the recommendation document?
Yeah, I think overall in education, it's mostly only addressed in science classes and not in a very comprehensive way. So I'm taking AP Environmental Science this year, and we have definitely addressed it, of course. But for students who aren't taking that class, they hear about it, but almost in snippets. And when we first, earlier in the year, started talking about it, a lot of students, just they weren't able to, when my teacher asked, like, explain how does climate change actually work? Like, what is the greenhouse gas effect? They kind of knew what it is, but they didn't have that solid foundation. And so that's really what we're hoping students will get, but then not only in science classes. So there's the New Jersey Student Learning Standards have just been updated with climate education standards that are saying that the district should address, or that every district should address climate change in all subjects. And then we say including but not limited to, because there are not currently standards for English and math, but we believe those are also important aspects. So for example, English classes, I think it's important for students to be able to understand like scientific writing as it relates to climate change.
So if I were to paraphrase it, you would like to see a comprehensive approach or almost a climate education curriculum that cuts across the subject areas?
Yes.
Okay. One last question. I'm gonna put you on the spot here. Okay, good, because this is the one that gets to everything. One of the big problems, I'm sure you realize, with climate change, is that a lot of people are for combating it until we all have to pay for it. And so I'm wondering if you've tried to do some kind of even an informal survey of the community to see what would the members of the community, the taxpayers in the community, be willing to sustain as far as the cost for doing some of the tougher things that you're proposing, which is the conversion to sustainable energy, the conversion to, I mean, transportation and so on.
Yeah, so we have not done something like that, but I think that can definitely be a priority in the near future for beginning this process. We have thought a lot about the fact that, yes, like, cost is the biggest probably barrier to doing any of this. And like, as you said, there are things that are going to come around in costs that the community is going to have to support and hopefully will be willing to support when they understand how important it is. But there are also things definitely that don't cost money, such as, just like off the top of my head, one thing we're hoping to do is like improve traffic flow in some areas to reduce idling, because it's very simple. And then there's also other things that will save money in the long term, and it's a matter of combining a lot of different funding sources to be able to create that almost like package that'll allow us to fund those things. So for example, for school buses, what some districts have used is something called like a pay-as-you-save program, where the utility company actually will pay for the upfront cost of the school bus. And then essentially, as you save money on gas from not having to run your diesel buses, then you pay that money towards the school bus until you've eventually paid it off. So there's a lot of programs like that that use really creative ways to get around this barrier of the cost.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say one thing. I'm glad you had a good focus on transportation. And I really think that is an area that even in the near term, there's a lot that can be done. We've talked about it at our board meetings this year. We're having trouble finding bus drivers. We have challenges with our routes. We have a lot of students who don't regularly ride the bus, but we have to allocate space for them in case they do ride the bus. So I look at that and I'd say, even if you're not looking at a technological change, where now you've got the capability to run a non-emissions school bus, there are things we can do in terms of coordination, in terms of promoting carpooling. You know, if you worry about idling, it's a lot easier not to have to worry about idling in traffic when you don't have as many vehicles going into our parking lots. So things like that, that we can organize, share information, maybe we don't have to allocate as many school buses the same level of capacity if we know people aren't going to take the bus. If we sign people up for carpooling, things like that. There are things we can do to organize. And I think it's a real fruitful area to work with the students.
Yeah, definitely.
Any other questions from board members? Well, we look forward to reviewing these materials, and I'm fairly optimistic that we'll be able to put a resolution in place by June. And perhaps we'll have further dialogue about that with all of you and as we get closer to that point, as we get closer to June. So thank you again for being here. We applaud you for your efforts. It's just absolutely amazing, and it's heartening to me because I know that you guys are gonna lead the way for the future. And what you're doing is impactful and important. And thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So one final thing for the kids. We did a local government energy audit a few years back. If you have your teacher reach out, I'll let you read them and see what you think of them, and then we can go from there.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. You're welcome to stay if you'd like to be here for the rest of the meeting. It'll be a rip-roaring time. Absolutely. And so we're going to move on to the presentation of our annual audit. Mr. Colavita.
Okay. So each year, the district undergoes an annual audit that takes a look at our finances. One of the requirements is to go through the findings with the board. So just to try to go quick through it, they usually spend, our auditors spend two weeks in June going through some preliminary testing work. They come back sometime in the fall for a good four to five weeks of in-depth analysis, questioning, looking at paperwork, purchase orders, and all that kind of stuff. Right, there are four kinds of audit opinions that you can get: unmodified, modified, adverse, and disclaimer of opinion, which means they can offer no opinion because your records are that poor. You want to get an unmodified opinion, which is what we have received. We've never received anything We've never received anything other than an unmodified opinion, which is good news for me and the board ultimately. Just some numbers that we like to talk about when they, when you see them, especially on the user-friendly budget that's going to be coming out. Our audit will show that we have $18 million in fund balances, which is extremely misleading. The first number, the 28,212, was excess surplus monies that was picked up last year and is actually budgeted in our current budget. The $1.3 million of encumbrances are purchases and services that were agreed to, basically agreed to last year on June 30th and carried into this year because they were not complete. We either didn't receive the complete service or the product, and it carries in. So that money's off the books already. 91,277 is actual money in reserve. It's maintenance reserve. It's designed for what we call routine or required maintenance. We typically don't touch this unless there's an actual emergency that we need to tap into it. It rests there in case. Our capital reserve, we spent a lot of time over the past three or four years discussing capital reserve. It's one of the ways that we can attempt to tackle bigger capital-type projects like roofs, paving, classroom additions, things like that. That's how we can do that without going to a referendum, and we do put that money away. That $10 million was available as of June 30th. We have spent four and a half million dollars of that, so there's probably $5.4 million left as of today. Surplus, that $1.9 million was left over at the end of last year again and is being used in this year's budget to balance that. So that money has gone away. 641,000, that will be used in next year's budget, the 2223 budget that we'll talk about in a few minutes. And the allowable surplus of 4%, that is our true rainy day fund. If we were to have something that really catastrophic, that wasn't covered by insurance, that would be something that we can tap into. That 4% was for last year and this year, and by next year, at this time when we're building a budget, will have to be whittled down to 2%, back to where it belongs. The government gave us the ability to keep 4% during the COVID year, just in case something else happened. Hopefully, we will return that money to the budget next year. We did have one minor audit recommendation. It was, happened, occurred in the preparation of the extraordinary aid report, which is a report we give to the state that shows extraordinary costs for special education students over a certain threshold. It was a minor transposition of a number. The person who was performing it put a service with one student, and it should've gone with the other, with another student. It didn't affect us receiving the amount, but it, it should've, it was noted, and we'll have a corrective action plan that will just double down on the, on the reviewing of that report. Comment wasn't substantive in nature and didn't receive us affecting our, our recommendation. Just a few final comments. I'd like to thank everybody for this. My office does a huge amount of work for it. The entire central office building is involved in this. They're questioned by the auditors as to each of their roles. They do fraud checks. They, they check the work of the curriculum office when they're processing information. They check our food service accounts. They check our submission of free and reduced lunch accounts. They check our enrollment reports. All that stuff is reported, and our building staff gets highly involved as, through student activity accounts and petty cash accounts in those places. So it's, it's a team effort. Everybody is cooperative, and we never have any issues with, with answering the questions that come up. It gives us accountability by having an independent auditor come through. It helps us revise our purchasing practices and our training procedures with our staff members, which we do each and every year. We, we meet in the fall every year to go through anything that's changed, anything that's been found in the audit, and we feel that everybody is, is gaining knowledge each year and getting better. And it's also part of CUSAC, and we have the answer to the county superintendent. The audit, if you remember reading CUSAC a few years back, the, most of the fiscal piece relates to the audit, and there's really no questioning. They just go right to the audit. Did you do this? Did you do this? Did you do this? So it's, it's a critical piece of the functioning of not only my office, but the entire district. So in a nutshell, that's it. Are there any questions from the board on the audit overall? I'm, I'm pleased with what, what we have, and we're well-positioned to go into next year.
No questions, concerns? No.
What?
Well, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Colavita for all the hard work in pulling this together and presenting to us and to all of the staff and administration for, for also contributing to this. We're very fortunate for your efforts and, and glad to see the unqualified result.
Yeah, like I said, it's, it can't do it alone. We need everybody to be involved.
Absolutely. Team effort. Thank you very much.
Oh, we need to.
And do we need to, is there a resolution? Yeah, if there's a resolution to accept it, it looks like.
Yeah.
Right. So I will request a motion to accept the 202021 audit documents and to approve the attached corrective action plan from the auditor's recommendations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Thanks again. Now we will move into our public hearing and special opportunity for public comment on the 2122 Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse Report. Ms. Smith?
Thank you very much.
Can everyone hear me? Okay.
So tonight, we'll be presenting the findings from the first period of this school year. You may remember Dan DiStefano and I presented back in November, and that was on last year's report. So now for this part, we talk about the first half of this year. We did caution you that now that we're in a more normal year, we expected the numbers to increase, and they didn't disappoint. Let's go there. So, our first slide. Okay. So this first slide, as you've seen before, this is an example of the Violence and Vandalism Form that we submit to the state of New Jersey. Any HIBs, harassment, intimidation, bullying reports are listed here as well. You can see that they ask for an incident type, where it happened, was it reported to the police, number of offenders and victims, things like that. So this is what gets submitted each year. One thing that we did differently this year is we thought it would be important to add the 1819 school year data, just so you can see pre-COVID numbers. And then knowing that 1920 school year was cut off, you know, March on, we were in lockdown, and then last year was a bit of a transitional year for us, and then back to 2122. So if you look at the numbers there, this is, these are the statistics for the entire district. We did expect a rise in numbers, as we said, and you can see that, you know, with 25 in-school suspensions, it actually isn't too far off of where we were during the pandemic. Our out-of-school suspensions is up where more aligned with pre-COVID numbers and in our first-year numbers. This is a count of incidents by location. So on the left-hand side, you see each of our buildings. At the top of each column, you'll see the breakdown of the different offenses. Just a few things to note here. Substances does not include results from the random drug screening. Only students who are found under the influence or in possession would be listed here. That would include alcohol and/or drugs. In looking at the HIV column, the confirmed, which is to the left of the straight line on the right, I do that just so that you don't get confused with that. The HIB confirms would be the reports that are actually confirmed. On the right-hand side of the line, the last column, those are ones that are reported but not founded to be actual HIBs. So typically, we show you just a three-year trend, but again, going with the pre-COVID numbers, we wanted to put in the 1819 school year. So this is total. We're definitely back to a more normal year. However, in some instances, we're lower, some instances we're higher. Do remember that this is only the first half of the year, so this is just period one. I'm gonna turn it over to our anti-bullying specialist and supervisor of counseling in just one minute. But just a few things. When you look at the violence, remember what we consider something that we report as violence would be things that are not even thought twice of in other districts. We do take it very seriously, especially when it's related to HIV. We always make sure of that, that's involved. The vandalism ones that took place often are things in our bathrooms, which happen from time to time. Something gets pulled off a wall, and that's typically where that number comes from. And then the substance abuse, as I said earlier, is, is not related to random drug screening, but is something that may occur during vaping, for instance. Vaping typically falls under the tobacco policy, but if something was in the vape, such as THC oil, then that would fall under this category. All right. Dan, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. As you can see, the far-right column, the current school year, the first half of the current school year, is, you know, more in line with the 1819 pre-COVID totals for our HIB specifically. You know, we're, we're taking a number of actions as a result, and the next few slides summarize those. In terms of some things we've had in place since the last report, and throughout January, our counselors, including our school counselors and student assistance counselors, visited recitation and wellness classes at the secondary level to present on a number of topics. In January, also, we had a guest speaker, Scott Pendergrass, through Minding Your Mind, who presented to our seniors in, in wellness. He shared a lot of really valuable stories that, you know, we surveyed the students afterwards, and they, you know, they, they definitely found value in those presentations. February, we had the second installment of our Parent University Series, which Samantha Awadala is, has been running. She's our Rutgers clinician. And the second installment was titled Parenting in the Pandemic. That was as COVID numbers were increasing and we were remote for a time, and, you know, that, we, we decided a program on parenting in the pandemic would be timely. In February, we also had Signs of Suicide programming for our freshmen at the high school. We also reintroduced the Sources of Strength Program, which had kind of been interrupted due to COVID and, and being remote for, for a couple of years. I got to participate in a couple days of training for that program, and, you know, I'm really looking forward to the impact that it, it will have on, on the school community. And then finally, Welcoming Schools presented to all of our elementary and middle school faculty regarding inclusive practices in the month of February. They will be working with us more later in the school year, which I'll discuss. A couple of ongoing activities. We have a cohort of faculty participating in an acceptance and commitment therapy course led by Dr. Trevor Buser. Two of our school counselors are participating in the AIR Therapy Dog Training Program currently. Two counselors additionally are being trained as anti-bullying specialists. Our school safety teams continue to meet on a regular basis throughout the school year for programming specific to their buildings. Faculty trainings in each building are being carried out regarding HIV policy. And we also have strong partnerships with a number of parent organizations through the Municipal Alliance, Hope Valley Single Parents Group, and the Timber Lane Parent Support Group. And finally, we have a few upcoming activities. I've added it late because I didn't want to steal Dr. Teresa's thunder on our Wellness Day, but that will be coming up on April 18th. Also in April, AIR will be presenting to our juniors during wellness class. That's the group that brings the therapy dogs in. In April, we're also planning an evening program for our parents called LGBTQ+ Allyship Workshop, which is in partnership with some of the folks who came from Welcoming Schools earlier in the year. And then in May, we're planning towards Mental Health Awareness Month, including parent programming. And in June, we're planning towards Pride Month, including our LGBTQ201 event.
Are there any questions?
I'd just like to add that I'm going to be running an in-person six-week nurtured heart training for parents in the month of May into June.
Thank you. I don't know if it pertains to the report itself, but just a question regarding the different resources that we offer. We did have our presenters today from the club talking about climate change and how that's a topic that is a source of anxiety for some of our students, and I imagine there are others as well. Do we typically, I, I know we have our, our survey coming out through the Municipal Alliance, but how specific do we get about asking our students about the things that they're anxious about and whether or not we need to create different affinity groups and, and, you know, ways to kind of respond to unique anxiety that they may present with?
It's, it's something as a department, as a counseling department, we try to keep a, a finger on the pulse, you know, as we meet, as a district team, discussing, you know, which, which topics are the most pressing, which topics we see affecting our students the most, and then adjusting any programming accordingly. And I, I felt the same way as they were speaking this, this evening about, you know, the impact that that must be having on, on our students. So maybe we can brainstorm some ways to incorporate that.
Thank you.
Just to answer your question too, I know that a teacher had brought that up about the eco-anxiety, so we are having a speaker come speak to the community in April.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Now, if I can just add in addition to that, and all that work is important, is that the work that we're doing with Dr. Buser and the work that he wants us to adopt as a district and we're looking into is just teaching folks coping skills across anxieties, right? The way the world is changing, whether it's climate change, whether it's, you know, the war that we're watching on TV in Ukraine, whether it's this virus or the next virus, teaching folks how to, how to cope in a, in a world that's unpredictable is what that work is. And, you know, just really having a flexible mindset around all of that, and how do we take care of ourselves in, in even uncertain times, is a part of it. Because I, I think folks are anxious overall, more than, about everything. So trying to teach people how to cope with those things is important.
And one, the, the one group I mentioned, our Sources of Strength Program at the high school, the Sources of Strength alludes to the, the, the internal strengths that we have or the things in our lives that we draw strength from. And, and like Dr. Teresa said, that's, that's universal. You know, whatever issue might arise, whatever might be adding stress to a student's life or adding anxiety, those are the, the skills, the coping mechanisms that they can lean on to get through those times. So, you know, I think that program and the students who are actively working in the program are gonna work to, to spread those, those ideas through the student body. It's not just limited to that group, but they're, we're brainstorming communication methods and different outreaches that can be done throughout the community to, to strengthen all those.
One of the really nice things about Sources of Strength is it's students leading it, and it's students taking the initiative and their ideas, and it's, it's really focused on what will be interesting, what will attract, and, and it's them helping each other. It's one of the reasons we brought it a few years ago. Unfortunately, the pandemic kind of took its toll in between and slowed us down a little bit, but it's so good to see that coming back because the students who were involved and the students who were helped by it really found it to be a valuable program.
Absolutely. Okay, so seeing no other questions from board members, I will thank you both, Ms. Smith and Mr. DiStefano. We appreciate all the, the effort that goes into this and, and all that you do for us here in the district. So I will open up for public comments specific to the Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse Report. Members of the public are invited to address the board on the 202122 Period One Report of Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment on this specific report is now open. I appear to have anyone participating, so we will close public comment, and I will request a res, request a motion per the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education accept the attached 202122 Period One Report of Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse as required by the New Jersey Department of Education in accordance with the New Jersey All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you again. Now we will move on to the presentation and adoption of our tentative budget.
One more time. We were fading. Now, now we're ready to go again. Get going. Poor Jess. Tell Jess it was four slides.
Thank you.
I was promised forty.
Forty slides.
No, no, you weren't.
Okay. So we've seen a lot of the last week, but a lot of the folks on, on YouTube have not. So we'll run through it. As we start everything with our mission statement, and it is the guiding document at which, you know, we, we do everything in the district. Just to retake back of where we've been, we started the process in the summer internally, discussing how we would start to present. We had three budget discussions during the fall. We talked about CNI. We talked about special education and facilities in detail and in depth. November to February, we focus on internal meetings with our budget managers. We speak to each of our managers, from each principal to each supervisor, each budget manager through this time to ascertain what is going well, what they could use help with, and those kinds of things. And we find that they're very, they provide, they're, they're very fruitful. They, we see what's going well. We, we can ask questions, and they're, they're free to give their answers as to what they could use, and also things that aren't going well. We started with the board, January 31st, with a work session. State aid allocation was a few weeks ago. We had a budget work session last week, and here we are tonight with our tentative budget adoption. Once we adopt tonight, I have until next Monday to submit the official document to the state for their review. We have a tentative date scheduled for April 12th if we need to do any further discussion with a final hearing and adoption of the 202223 budget on April 25th, which will be part of our regular board meeting. Again, some, just some quick facts, thirty-five, almost 3,500 students. We transport a good majority of them each day. Eight buildings, our teachers and staff, 24 administrators, and we're a I district factor group, which is really kind of a defunct rating, but when, when they were doing that, it just shows that we are at the upper end socio-economically, and that's why we get so little state aid. Again, the things that make us unique, we believe in small schools and small class sizes. We have an extraordinary number of different programs and services that we offer to our students, from athletics to social, emotional learning, to arts, the, the arts, and any number of different games and clubs and things that go on at all of our schools, from high school all the way down into the elementary schools with the enrichments we provide. We have a highly experienced teaching staff. When they, usually when they come to Hopewell, they make a career out of it. We're proud of them. You know, we, we kind of educate them and bring them into the Hopewell way, and they stay, and it brings a lot of continuity. Again, I talked about a lot of programs that exceed the minimum, minimum requirements. Again, just going on to our mission statement, all the different things that we do for our children, our students just mentioned, you know, nature and being outside, and we've provided tents in the past, we've provided the Zoom lessons, and all the different types of education that we do. We've provided the Zoom lessons and all the different types of education that we do, the hands-on learning. And again, our students go in a plethora of different directions, from college prep to the sports and athletics, to the vocations as woodshop and our auto shop, one of the last functioning woodshops and auto shops in this area, and all well-subscribed. What I'm hearing is we actually have increased enrollment in our woodshop. So all of those areas are thriving in Hopewell. And again, we feel that we are a beacon in this community. We are at the forefront of doing a lot of things, from vaccine clinics to helping with the food pantry, delivering meals to folks when necessary, and providing support wherever and whenever we can. So the priorities when we develop any budget, and I added that little note there at the top as I was reading through the slides again, but I think that the budget reflects our values. All the previous slides that we had reflect what we believe in. We believe in being part of this community.
I'm going to stop here. I know that the students mentioned in their presentation that they hope that we adopt the new standards around climate change in Hopewell. That is a requirement, and we must do that by next fall to comply with our CUSAC review, which will happen next full year. In addition to that, there are new social studies standards, wellness standards. Mrs. The Climate Change, LGBTQ, persons with disability standards, we're still up working on that? Yes, so in the AAPI, we're trying to get a head on those bills just passed. Since we're opening up these different curriculum guides, just fix that too. So there's a lot of curriculum work that has to happen this summer because we will be audited next full year.
So I mean, again, they're basic priorities. Again, I think they reflect the values. And that's the important part. And we wanted to be able to maintain everything that we've brought and have grown to appreciate in Hopewell Valley, all the options, the class options and things to keep them going. And again, the last budget goal priority is to develop a budget that prepares us for what we don't know yet. We're in a period right now. Dr. Treese mentioned a war in Ukraine, and we don't know how that's going to fully affect us yet. Some things that we're considering, all of these things are in various states of flux as we move into the 2022-23 year. We've all seen our cost for energy increasing. I paid $594 for home heating oil this week, which was about $2.5 more than I was paying. So that hit right away. Didn't take long for that. Our health benefit usage, we've touted that as one of the savings in our budget over the years. We have come out of COVID. We have come out of the first year, two years of being self-insured, and we are reaping the benefits of that. However, as we move, again, out of COVID and people start going back to the doctor on a regular basis, we're going to be closely monitoring the usage because remember, we aren't paying premiums anymore. We're paying for the actual dollar-for-dollar usage of our staff members. We've talked throughout the fall of our facility maintenance costs and how they are increasing, and we're doing our best to maintain them. Yes, we did tackle a huge, huge portion of them during our referendum, but as you know, in your own homes, the more you do, the more you need to do. Special education, as much as we try to stay on top of it through our own highly-successful programs, we cannot predict the number of students that may come in in any given year and what special needs they may have. And Ms. Donardo can talk about that at length, but we are always monitoring that and dealing with what we are given. Property and casualty insurance, again, continues to be a hot-button topic this year, especially in the area of cyber insurance and workers' compensation. It seems anything and everything these days is being challenged as far as workers' compensation and our responsibility towards it. Contract settlements this year, we are in the midst of negotiations with our professional educational staff, and we'll be also with our support staff. So 80% of our staff is coming to the end of current collective bargaining agreements, and we'll be dealing with those as an unknown going into next year's budget. Mr. Swick, you mentioned it earlier, and so did the students. Transportation, bus route renewals are going to be a question mark going in, as well as driver shortages and fuel increases. We did reward our drivers this year with an increase, and we absorbed that within our budget. But again, fuel increases were not planned when we first started to develop this budget. We've had to include that in our most recent version of the budget. Dr. Treese did just mention curriculum and instruction initiatives, the myriad of different programs that are going to be reviewed this summer, additional textbooks that will be purchased for various parts of the curriculum, and a new math program that we're going to be working through in the fall, K6, right? K6, K5. And again, because we're not quite, we don't know where we are with it yet, we did have some money set aside for COVID-related expenses and staffing should we need to go and pivot in that direction in the fall. There is some bank cap that we generated that will not be used in this year's budget, not recommended to be used, but it's there in case something happens as we start to review next year's budget. I put this more to the front just to show, we had been experiencing a period of declining enrollment from about 2011, 1011, down through 2021, but we have seen a little bit of a stabling off with that. And we are, it's hard to tell right now. We're anticipating that some students will return from COVID. A lot of them went to private schools, especially the kindergarten preschool group. And we're looking to see what kind of enrollments that we start to pick up as we move towards the fall. And again, this is total enrollment. The previous slide was first grade enrollment, which is where we kind of see the influx of kids, but we have stabled out a little bit right now. Okay, so we're going to go right into the proposed budget. The budget is divided into three specific and separate areas. The general fund, which are your basic operating expenses from regular instruction, transportation facilities, maintenance, the office of superintendent, business administrator, human resources, special education department, our principals, all of our schools are in that first general category. The special revenue fund is grants and only grants. It's federal, state, and local grants that we get dollar in, dollar out. It doesn't affect the tax levy in any way. It's just money that we track and are required to maintain separately. Debt service is a fancy word for our mortgage, and the only mortgage we have left is the new referendum we did in 2016. Everything else is paid off. And that's why you see the other debt falling off. This is what we had promised back when we first went to the referendum, that all of the other debt has fallen off, and we see a very large drop-off in the payment that we will need to make in 2022-23. Those are our expenditures. How we break up the revenues are as follows. Local revenues, the part that we're responsible, we'll go into that slide later. State resources have increased, and federal resources have maintained the same, actually gone down a little bit. The difference in state sources, we did get an additional $600,000 in general aid this year that we budgeted for, we planned for. The additional almost $1 million, $1 million is due to the debt service payment. As I mentioned, the debt service payment is entirely related to the new debt that we struck in 2016 that was the only debt that we had eligible for debt service aid. The previous monies that we did, the previous referendum we did, was all money that we got upfront from them. There were different kinds of grants, and we paid the 40%, or we paid the 60% upfront, and they gave us money as we sought reimbursement. So we would submit, they would give us money. The new, and they don't do that anymore. The way they do it now is it's a total payment off the debt service each year, subject to appropriation of funds. So it's a little different way of doing it, but that's the biggest piece of our state aid that we've gotten in this current year.
Bob, just to clarify, that's that increased because we had planned to increase our debt service on the referendum debt this year, so that's why we get a higher...
Correct. Well, it's just what's, all the debt that's left is debt that was eligible for debt service. So it's, last year, most of the principal we paid was on old debt, which is why we got a smaller amount. Okay, so this is the high in the sky. We'll go a little bit more down to earth. Hopefully, Adam, this is what you guys requested last week and kind of shows operating expenses, less capital outlay. So capital outlay are your projects, your facility projects in that budget right now, our projects related to the tennis courts at TMS, which are beyond repair and need to be completely redone, and planning. We are not doing it this year, but next year at this time, the replacement of the turf field at Central High School. So what we're trying to illustrate here, all the major categories that I spoke about on the previous slide. The board wanted to get a knowledge of our general operating expenses and how much they were increasing. And we're looking at a 3.3% increase in our general operating expenses from budget to budget. And you can see again that the drop-off to our capital outlay work this year and the drop-off to our debt service for an overall expenditure increase of 0.2%. But we wanted to let it known that our general expenses are going up 3.3%. Just a graphical representation of that, what's critical is that the vast majority of our budget goes to our general ed, special ed, and staff benefits. We are a business that is highly driven by people. Our products are our students, and they're educated by our staff members. So you could see that almost more than three-quarters of our budget is directly related to the education of our students. One might add that transportation is how we get our students to school, and the capital outlay is how we keep our buildings up and running. Operation is all those other things that we do from cleaning the schools and keeping them ready and open and safe for everybody's use. Going back to revenues, this is how our revenues break down. Our fund balance is money that we've taken from our savings, either unplanned revenues or unexpended appropriations from year to year, our local tax levy increase, both debt service and general fund, state aid numbers that we've received, miscellaneous revenues that we generate on our own from tuitions that we charge outside students, monies that we use to rent our facilities, and various other revenues that we get for participating in other projects such as E-Rate, money that we get for renting out our roofs for PSENG to use the solar system. All of that goes into the monies, the miscellaneous revenues. And again, I tried to break this down to even more specific level. 93% of our funding comes from ourselves through property taxes, miscellaneous revenues, and the surplus going in there. Federal funding is less than 1% of our budget. This is where, what it all means, our joint levies combined, we have a 2% increase to our general fund, which is the maximum amount we can increase it without waivers and other functions of the school budget, but 2%. And we have a 13% decrease to our debt service payment, again, due to the falling off of the debt that was used to renovate the high school many years ago, and for a total tax levy increase of 1.3% this year. This gives you a little historical knowledge of what we've done over the past six years. Based upon the information I've gotten from the Mercer County Tax Office, this is what it means to the average homeowner, generally in the area of $550,000 in all the municipalities. You'll be a one-cent increase in Hopewell Borough, a seven-cent decrease in Hopewell Township, a one-cent decrease in Pennington Borough. Based upon this budget, these are the things that we feel that we've done well and where all that, those dollars and those expenditures go. And this is what they've done for the residents and the students of the valley. We look into climate surveys that go out several times each year, focus groups that have been done, curriculums, college acceptances, all of these things go into to demonstrate what we've done to measure the success we've done in developing and working on budgets and curricula. Again, more return on our investment, what we've done over the years. But we have everything in there from language programs to the addition of full-day kindergarten that we implemented years back, our athletics, arts, class sizes, clubs. Again, mentioning the auto shop, wood shop, all the engineering and that kind of education is what we've been able to accomplish over the years. Home values, as I said, have increased over the past 10 years. We talked about the curriculum, and these are the things that we're going to be addressing this year with the increased dollars that we've put towards it. Again, addressing mandates that have been placed upon us and doing with the natural course of time and having to replace textbooks and math programs as the need sees fit. Some of the things we've done, again, to control, you've seen these before, but we've worked on our health benefit packages to limit the exposure to the district. Special education, trying to return students to their least restrictive environment, more cost-effective environment in-house, saving the cost of transportation and outside tuitions, reducing staff and class sections when we can due to attrition, hopefully, but not keeping class sizes overly small when we can afford not to. Again, administration, the same as our staff. When we've been able to reduce them, we've reduced them over the past full year. The school choice program, which brings in revenue to us by allowing students to come in. We'll be doing a reevaluation of that program next year to hopefully generate some additional revenue. We had some students drop out at an unfortunate time for us where we could not replenish them in time for this year's budget, but hopefully bringing them back in the fall next year and having it count towards the following year's budget. But that's several hundred thousand dollars. It's peaked over at about $330,000 that we didn't have to raise in taxes. Technology, again, doing a lot of different things to streamline and eliminate ourselves from high-cost software packages, moving to a Google environment, which is largely free to school districts, and releasing the number of servers and storage that we've done. We are very ahead of the curve in a lot of ways, technology-wise. We have been, we give our staff and students access to a large number of things that our locals, other school districts are not doing, that we are able to do with our technology because we have saved money in other areas. Again, energy is a wild card this year, but we have gone out for competitive bids for electric and gas, and we've been installing higher-efficiency equipment, and we have seen those results, especially even in this building where we've seen a reduction in energy just by installing new windows. People have noticed that we've been able to turn the heat down because it's just warmer. Again, we're trying to keep an effort and an eye on capital projects as we move through, trying to have a systematic way of attacking and addressing these. You may have heard me say during the audit report, we do have about $5.5 million left in our budget. As you can see, there's more projects than that. We'll have to come up with ways through finance facilities committee discussions and figuring out how we can attack these projects going forward. Just, again, there's the capital reserve number that we mentioned before and a history of what we've been able to do over the years by putting money into our capital reserve to avoid going out to further referenda. Lastly, if we were, we have made cost-saving measures over the years and including this year. There are things that were eliminated from the budget that we didn't include, things that Dr. Treese wanted, things that the principals had wanted, curriculum had wanted, have all been, we've put on the back burner for this year until we're in a better position to address it. But if we were looking at reducing things this year, again, it would further hinder our ability to tackle building repairs and improvements. We'd have to put off projects even further. Our elective offerings, special, you know, all of those courses would have to be reexamined, reduced, co-curricular activities. We are one of the few districts that are still trying, whenever possible, to maintain athletic programs at the freshman, junior varsity, and varsity... athletic programs at the freshman, junior varsity, and varsity level, as well as at middle school. And our middle school has found difficulty over the past few years finding opponents because other schools have gotten rid of those and moved more to intermural courses. Again, further reductions to our administration, teaching, and support staff to increase class, it basically would increase class sizes, increase those student teacher ratios. We are always looking to add additional safety and security measures to our buildings. Whenever we can find extra dollars in the budget, we like to put additional door swipes and cameras that have proven very effective as we move to catching things that happen around our campus. Again, technology upgrades, as with anything else, facilities upgrades, when you get to the end of that facilities list, something is at the end coming up new. Same with technology. Every time you think you're ahead of the refresh of your technology equipment, you're coming back around, starting over again. We would like to try to reduce the amount of time it takes between getting old computers to new computers. Takes us to the end. Hopefully, we got through it a little quicker this week, but I guess now we're opening up to the board for their comments and questions as we move towards the adoption of this tentative budget.
Bob?
Yeah.
I did have one question first, just to thank you and everybody for the very thorough review, as well as the reviews we had on the departments and stuff throughout the year leading up to this. We handled a lot of this in a lot more detail, and if the public wants to see how you came up with your facilities list, please go back to November.
Yep, I think they're all posted up there.
Just one question after last week I wanted to ask you. So there are a couple major facilities items, the tennis courts, for example, and I think there was one other, and I'm not remembering exactly what it was, that we had talked about that we were going to pay from this year's budget.
Right.
And is there a particular, my question is, is there a particular reason we're doing that as opposed to like paying it from capital reserve and then bringing that as surplus forward towards the next year's budget? I'm just asking because if you brought it forward, that would give you the flexibility to potentially not put it in capital reserve, you needed it for some other expense.
Right. Well, the reason why we, the tennis court and the turf field are the two we were speaking of. The tennis court and the turf field have to be in the budget. We must put them in. They're not related to a thorough and efficient education, and they don't qualify as other projects otherwise eligible for state funding. So there is no funding available for the tennis court or the turf field. So we couldn't just, we couldn't just remove the money from the capital reserve at any time as we would do a roof or an HVAC upgrade or something like that. So it must be included in the budget at that point. So that's why it's being included at this point.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, we will move into our required public comment session. Members of the public are invited, and this is specifically on the budget, members of the public are invited to address the board on the 2022-23 tentative budget for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment on the budget is now open. Seeing none, I will request a motion, I will close public comment, and request a motion that the board adopt the following resolution to approve and submit the proposed 2223 annual school budget. The board also accepts the New Jersey Department of Education notification of 2223 state aid and authorizes the administration to make minor adjustments in the budget required by the Executive Mercer County Superintendent of Schools.
And just to note on that, it's mostly technical changes that may appear within the system. The tax levy will not change.
Motion, please.
Motion.
All in favor?
I gotta do a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is a roll call.
Ms. Driver. Ms. Genovasi. Mr. Herbert. Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Suicki.
Yes.
Ms. Lindthorpe.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now we will move into our regular public comment session. We can't get enough. Members of the public are invited to address the board on a matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment is now open. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Do we have any items of old business to bring before the board? We will, I will request a motion to approve the consent agenda items that have been marked with the asterisk.
Move.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. We will move to Mr. Herbert to provide a report on the Finance and Facilities Committee, please.
All right. We met on the 14th last Monday night and talked largely about a bunch of different maintenance items that have either cropped up or are ongoing, mostly. The Stony Brook boiler replacement is proceeding, the high school flood mitigation bid opening is coming up soon, some roof repairs at the Hopewell Cafeteria, Hopewell Elementary Cafeteria revealed some poor conditions there, and so that will soon be added to our capital projects list that you see up there for the next four or five years. Working on planning out the Hopewell Elementary Boiler and HVAC work that's going to be coming in 2023, the tennis court bids are coming soon, and I think that was all for the maintenance. Oh, the admin building window work, as we can see, is complete, but there's still a bunch of punch list items that are being worked on. The other big thing we talked about was the demographic study that we're trying to commission. We received three bids. There's actually a fairly wide range of costs, and since the township had agreed to share the cost with this, we're going to go back to them, discuss with them a little bit more about what they want out of it and see if we can find, figure out who to choose in that.
So just to follow up on that, I did send it to the mayor and Kevin's the deputy mayor, right? The deputy mayor?
No.
No, just the regular. Council member, and then two of their internal, their engineer and their chief CFO also received a copy and acknowledged as such, and they're going to be reviewing it and go back to us to determine if we want to go forward and have some discussions with some of the professionals that we received.
Thanks. That's all for me.
Accepted donation.
Yeah, we have an acceptance of a donation, number nine.
Acceptance of the donation, what is that? Oh, the Martin acoustic guitar with case and small amplifier valued at $300. So what do we need for that?
A motion.
We need a request of motion to acknowledge and accept this donation.
Move.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Herbert.
Okay.
Ms. Smith, are you doing our personnel?
Yes, thank you.
So before we start, we're going to ask for a motion in the second to approve the personnel agenda.
Motion.
I got your vote. Okay.
Thank you very much. So Personnel Committee met last Monday prior to our special meeting. We reviewed the personnel appointments, specifically retirements of some veteran staff. We have Susan Horowitz, who is our ELL teacher, been with the district since 1988. Dave Budcavage, our wellness teacher at Timberlane, has been with the district since 1989. Jeannie Scar, our speech-language specialist at Stony Brook, been here for 14 years, and Debbie Toth, paraprofessional at Bear Tavern, has been with the district since 2008. So we'll be celebrating them in a few months as our retirees, but we discussed them. Also, the ECA appointments, the majority of them this month are Timberlane after-school enrichments and coaches for the spring. We discussed the violence and vandalism in your report that we just reviewed earlier in the meeting. There is a sidebar agreement, which was discussed in a previous committee regarding a tradesperson mechanic, just there was some issue with the previous CBA where the title was left out, so we needed to do a sidebar to get it back in, and then we needed to update a job description. So all of that was submitted for discussion. We also discussed the second virtual fair for CJ Pride. It's this Wednesday, actually. We're very excited. There's over 70 districts in central and south and north Jersey now. We're no longer just CJ Pride, so we're trying to think of a new letter because we're expanding, and it's even gone across the river over to Pennsylvania, so very excited about that. So that will be this Wednesday. We have several administrators will be accompanying me in the virtual fair, and we also began our vice principal search for the Timberlane Vice Principal. We had interviews last week, and we're continuing on with that this week, so we're excited for that. So that was pretty much what we discussed, the personnel.
Any questions for Ms. Smith?
Any questions for Ms. Smith? Okay, seeing none, we will say thank you. Is there anything to us? Yeah, we have to, you have a roll call here, correct?
Yep. Okay, roll call vote on the personnel actions. Ms. Genovasi. Mr. Herbert.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Suicki.
Yes.
Ms. Driver. Ms. Lindthorpe.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Education Program Committee, Ms. Driver.
Hello? Hello? You got it?
There you go.
I hear it now.
Yeah.
So we actually had a very quick meeting, and we had two presenters. The first was Danielle Arias, a teacher at TMS. She's a grad student and was conducting some research on student teachers, teachers previous, like pre-service, that's the word, pre-service teachers, and how prepared are they or how prepared do they feel if there were like a high drill or, you know, some sort of lockdown or security, you know, drill of some sort, whether drill or real thing, however they, and how prepared they felt. So she was letting us know that she was going to be surveying those that are in our district already to kind of get a feel of how they were feeling. And she agreed that she would like to report back after she finds some, finds out her information. It sounded very interesting, actually. I was very interested to see how prepared they feel, you know, from day one, whether when they walk in the door, are they feeling okay about that? And then the other presentation we had was from Mr. Nguyen, Strategic Studies Supervisor. He presented the curriculum, like some of the courses that are being offered, some standard, standards and revisions. He talked about some resources and things that he provided for the teachers and some mandates that I think are coming into play that we already have assessed. I'm done.
That was it. I said it was a short meeting. Here we go again. Oh, I'm sorry.
In all seriousness, I really am done. It really was timely.
Rosette, I told you it would work.
Any questions for Ms. Driver? All right, seeing none, we will say thank you and move on to community relations. Mr. Mason.
Yeah, we met last week. It was also a short meeting. We went over a couple of things. First, we're going to be, being that the budget, the tentative budget was adopted tonight, we're going to be issuing a press release tomorrow. We notified, we reached out, we notified the local media that they're anticipating it. We're going to get it out. We just think it's a good way. You know, I know our meetings are fascinating, but not everyone pays attention, and so it's a good way to kind of get the word out there and keep the community posted on what's going on. The other thing we really discussed was the Wellness Day that Dr. Treese announced tonight, which I think is fantastic. I think anytime you can have a day, I really, we really want to push the idea to not just have it be a regular day for staff to not be working, to get out, enjoy your family, have Wellness Day, refresh, regroup, be out there, get out in nature and do some stuff. Which I want to see, I want to see a picture from all the admin in here of what you did on your Wellness Day. So I'm putting that out there now.
All right.
Because as much as, you know, it's funny, I talk to the admin all, you know, when we have our meetings, and I'm very big on, you know, it's important for the staff, even I'm in the SEL committee, it's important for staff to be in a good frame of mind because I think it rolls downhill, but it's important for the, for our admin. You guys put in a ton of work. I don't think you got the credit you deserve, and take that day for yourself and enjoy it and set the tone for everyone. I think it's good that it rolls down, and I think having our admin in a good place and our staff in a good place puts our students in a good place. So I really, I really want to see all of you take that day and do something for yourselves, and that's it.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Mason? All right, seeing none. SEL Committee, are you reporting for us, Ms. Donardo?
I am. So we met on March 17th, and we actually spent a good amount of time discussing the SEL Day for April 18th. Thank you, John, for your support, and we appreciate the kind words of all of us, and just how important it is for our community, our students, our families, our staff, and our administration to take that day and to go outside and do something that supports our mental health. We also reviewed the A and B survey that will be going out. I talked everyone through in the process, so the letters will be going to parents on May 10th. On May 13th, a deadline for parents to submit opt-out will occur. On May 17th, we will administer to grades nine through 12 during their wellness classes. And then I also shared, it was International SEL Day on March 11th, and our SEL Committee put together just a whole bunch of different options and activities at the different grade levels, and we shared it out, and it was very successful, so. And then we're also preparing for May being the International Mental Health Month, and hopefully we'll have some really great activities for that as well.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Policy Committee, Mr. Suicki.
Okay, can I have a motion to move the policy up for first reading, please?
Move.
Okay, great. All right, so what we have up is this policy 5751. We actually had this one read in January, but after the January meeting, we realized there were some things about it that we needed to review in greater detail. In fact, we even went back to our board's attorney for some clarification on some of the, some of the wording, some of the content, some of the meeting. So we have it back up for first reading again with a revision, and the revision mainly relates to the context under which we can classify something as a sexual harassment of a student in the context of electronic media and how closely it is associated with the district. So that's what the clarification is there for. So we are recommending this now be moved for first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? Motion carries. Education Program Committee, Ms. Driver. Hello, hello. You got it?
Did it?
There you go. I hear it. Now, yeah. Okay. So we actually had a very quick meeting, and we had two presenters. The first was Danielle Arias, a teacher at TMS. She's a grad student and was conducting some research on student teachers, teachers previous, like pre-service, that's right, pre-service teachers, and how prepared are they, or how prepared do they feel if there were like a high drill or, you know, some sort of lockdown or security, you know, drill of some sort, whether drill or real thing, however they, and how prepared they felt. So she was letting us know that she was going to be surveying those that are in our district already to kind of get a feel of how they have it. And she agreed that she would report back after she finds some of her information. It sounded very interesting, actually. I was very interested to see how prepared they feel, you know, from day one, whether when they walk in store, are they feeling okay about that? And then the other presentation we had was from Mr. Ruin, the studies supervisor. He presented the curriculum, like some of the courses that are being offered, some standard, standards and some revisions. He talked about some resources and things that can provide for the teachers and some mandates that I think are coming into play that we already have discussed. I'm done. So. That was it. I said it was a short meeting.